Good evening and welcome to the JDA meeting for Monday, January 4th, 2021. First meeting of the new year. Welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Dokler. Dokler, are you on? Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Kavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Vean.
Here.
Mayor Bochensky.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item 2.1, case loan request, North Star Insulation MVR Properties.
Members of the JDA, I'm Brandon Baumback, Director of Business Development with the Grand Forks Region EDC, and I'm happy to present this application here in front of you today. It's from MVR Properties on behalf of North Star Insulation, owned and operated by Jason Howard. North Star Insulation specializes in commercial and industrial insulation applications, including specialized applications to pipes, ductwork, tanks, vessels, other mechanical systems. Many of their customers are primary center companies like LM Windpower, JR Simplot, American Crystal Sugar. Jason has recently purchased North Star Insulation a couple of years back and have been leasing the building he's currently in. This application is to finance the building, purchase it more efficiently, operate his company. Total project investment would be $961,000. It's financed both in part by SBA and Alaris Financial. Alaris provides $475,000. So the application in front of you is to buy the interest rate down to 1% via the Flex Pay program. This is a loan of $39,638, which would, of course, leverage the bank in North Dakota's contribution at $73,614. It's a company of 20 employees. It could be an opportunity to create three new employees. This is secured through a second mortgage on the property, corporate guarantee and personal guarantees. It's been in front of the EDC as well as the Growth Fund Committee, and with your approval would be the final approval on this request. Jason Howard with the company, I understand, is on the Zoom call, as well as Mark Yana from Alaris, in case there are any questions, and I'd be happy to answer any as well.
Any immediate questions? We do have a public hearing, so let's open the public hearing. Any comments? Hearing done. We'll bring it back to council. Any further questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.2, Corporate Center 2 Lease for Ann Love.
Thank you. Chairperson Mock. The staff report kind of walks you through the terms of Ann Love's lease with the JDA and Corporate Center 2. That lease commenced in January of 2018. They came back in June of 2020 with a request to cancel that lease due to some business reversals associated with COVID and other things. At that time, the request was to terminate the lease, and they requested consideration of tenant improvements as an offset to some of their accrued rent. The recommendation out of Growth Fund Committee at that time was for the Schmitz, who are the principals of Ann Love, to meet with the city attorney and provide financial information so that the city attorney could review that situation and make a recommendation based on their financial situation. In the subsequent months, that has occurred, and based on the financial information that the Schmitz provided and Mr. Gosted's independent review, he has made a recommendation to accept their settlement offer of approximately 20 cents on the dollar. That would be $12,600. The conditions would be that they would enter into an agreement that would release the lease, transfer all of the improvements that they have made to the JDA, so it would be no liens. And then upon execution of that lease, they would pay the settlement and the business would be concluded. Schmitz are perfectly fine with this. I could certainly defer to Mr. Gosted if you have any questions, but the recommendation is to proceed as I've just outlined.
Thank you so much. Any immediate questions or comments from council? Shall we open the public hearing then? Any comments from the public? Hearing done. We'll close the public hearing and take it back to council.
Move approval.
A motion by Mr. Bochensky and a second by Mr. Weber. Any further comments? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Item 2.3, Corporate Center 2 Lease for Kitsona.
I'm just requesting that this item be polled. There's been some conversation with counsel of Kitsona. We expect an alternate proposal to be coming back to this group within the months. We're just requesting that this item be discussed at a later time.
Move to table.
Motion to table.
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Called order. Welcome, everybody. Grand Forks City Council Meeting, Monday, January 4th. Roll call, Marine.
Yep. Weigel.
Here.
Dokler. Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Kavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Vean.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, 1.3, Mayor's announcements. Got just a couple of announcements. First of all, I hope everyone had a good Christmas and Happy New Year. On a sad note, a couple of weeks ago, Lonnie Lofean, really a community giant, someone that built something special here, passed away. Our thoughts and prayers are definitely with his family. I think it's a tragic reminder of how fragile life is and that you got to enjoy every moment. But definitely a great man, and like I said, prayers for him and his family. I want to give our congratulations to Ray Holberg on receiving the Chamber of Commerce Henry Havig Award. You know, Ray's been a guy that's been a legislator a long time, brought a lot of projects across the finish line for Grand Forks. Just some of the recent ones, the investment at Grand Sky, the water treatment plant, the law school, the medical school, and we got a big session coming up, and we know he'll be pulling for us. So congratulations to him. Other than that, I think there's a lot of happy parents that got to send their kids back to school today. So I talked to Superintendent Brenner this afternoon, and he said everything went well, and there's a few students that were maybe originally planning on being distanced the rest of the year, that the parents are starting to look at sending them back. So I think that's a good sign. So that's all I have for announcements. Move on to two awards presentations, appointments and proclamations.
2.1 is the COVID-19 update.
Thank you. We're going to just have just a couple of short presentations here. Chief Lorenz has been taking the lead in helping us out in the Bynax Now, but I wanted to give both the Fire Department and the Police Department some credit. We got a call about a week and a half ago from the General Dormer of the National Guard that wants us to step up and get some of these done. And we got a Public Health Department that's been very busy with vaccines and a lot of other testing, so we managed to pull it together. And really want to thank Chief Lorenz and also Chief Nelson, but give us a quick briefing there, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky, members of the council. As Mayor Bochensky mentioned, we were contacted, particularly the mayor, by the governor's office regarding Bynax Now testing, and the mayor contacted myself and some others to ask about our ability to help coordinate these events. And so as a team effort between the Fire Department, the Police Department, and support by the IT Department, the Public Info Office and the Health Department, we were able to coordinate and make these events happen. The two locations selected were the Columbia Mall and the Grand Cities Mall. The management at both those locations have been very cooperative and easy to work with. And as such, last Wednesday, December 30th, we held our first event from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. at those two locations. The former shoe store across from the pet store in the mall, in the Columbia Mall, and the office space, our retail location next to Ace Hardware in the Grand Cities Mall. At that event, we tested about 275 people combined between those two locations. And then again, on Saturday, at the same two locations, we held an event from noon to 5:00 and tested 283. Between the two events, we identified 17 positive individuals. So we feel that it was beneficial to help identify these cases. The primary audience for these tests are asymptomatic. The Bynax Now tests are rapid antigen tests. Those that have pre-registered prior to the event, it goes smoothly, and it takes about 15 minutes from the time we do the test. It has to be recorded with timers, and then once it's identified, they get a text message notifying them of the results. Feedback was good. We had the National Guard in the coordinating of the events. There was a lot of coordination with the Guard. They supported both the events, Wednesday and Saturday with staff, and then moving forward is going to become just city events with police and fire providing the staffing for those testing events. Moving forward, had a meeting this morning, and we're going to hold two more events, excuse me, four events and alternate the locations. We feel that we can, with the number that are coming, we can handle it at one location. So this Wednesday, January 6th, at the Columbia Mall from 4:00 to 7:00, we're going to host another one. Saturday, January 9th, at the Grand Cities Mall, and then January 13th, Wednesday, again at the Columbia Mall, 4:00 to 7:00, and then on Saturday, the 16th, at the Grand Cities Mall from 12:00 to 3:00. We shortened the window by one hour. It seems that the rush of those desiring to be tested is early on, so that we feel we can accommodate it in that time period. The people that participated in the first two events, the training was good, were comfortable moving forward, and we think it provides another spot within the community for people that are wondering, can go out and get these tests and get the results quickly.
Thank you, Chief, and again, really appreciate your execution on that. So just to reiterate, yep, Wednesday and Saturday. Wednesday will be at the Columbia Mall, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and Saturday at the Grand Cities Mall.
4:00 to 7:00 p.m.
4:00 to 7:00, sorry. And Grand Cities Mall, 12:00 to 3:00. Free, they're free testing.
Free testing, yep. The tests are provided by the state, so we put in the order. They provide the tests, and between state resources, local resources, with the iPads and the personnel, we're able to make it happen. And again, it's really a partnership with the Police Department. Between the two, we provide all the staffing to make these things happen. And the other city departments, IT and the Health Department and the Public Info Office have been great stepping up and helping us get this out into the community, Facebook posts, news media, and those things. Any questions?
Have we gotten close to using all of our tests that we were provided?
Well, that's an open-ended question, because the state's sitting on somewhere close to 3 million tests, so we request them. We put it in an order. On Thursday, they'll be here for this event. The Guard brought the tests for the first two events, so as far as I know, we have not come close to running out of tests yet. Thank you.
Anything else for Chief? All right. No, you're good. Thank you. All right, and then we're just going to have Ms. Swanson, I believe, Ms. Bruins here as well. She's going to give us a little update on the Vaccine Administration. We're starting to finish Tier A1 and get into 1B, 1A, now we're onto 1B, or getting there, and that's going to be a much bigger task. So, Ms. Swanson, please.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky and members of the city council. I have a brief presentation for you, and as mentioned, Haley Boone, who is our Immunization Program Manager and is largely responsible for our COVID vaccination efforts by the Grand Forks Public Health Department, and our community coordination is also available to answer any questions following my presentation. So I'd like to thank Chief Lorenz and his team and the Police Department for assisting with a new request that came for the Bynax Now testing. It is really helping us to focus on our next endeavor, which is vaccinations, which I know many people are looking forward to hearing more about. Just as a reminder, this program of vaccination is largely responsibility of the states in terms of how vaccine is allocated. So our state was very proactive in ensuring that we had enrolled providers all over the state. There's more than 400. Additionally, the Department of Defense and tribal areas can receive their vaccine directly from federal contracts, so that's additional vaccine that's coming to our state. The long-term care facilities have options for pharmacy partnerships, and they have engaged pharmacies to do that, to vaccinate or provide vaccine for their residents and workers. And the North Dakota Department of Health is now allocating vaccines weekly, and they send messages to providers, and you have 24 hours to accept or decline based on your circumstances. We have received supplies that are needed to administer the vaccine. They were provided by the federal government. They are good supplies. We've had to augment those with some of our own, which we've used our care funding for. Just as a reminder also, we are working with our partners across the Grand Forks County, and I wanted to just reiterate this because it's such a fluid situation. As we receive vaccine and we have to work with priority groups, we want to ensure that we have really good communication. So these are our vaccine planning partners. You can see, it's a really nice mix of both public and private. It includes long-term care, pharmacies, our major partners that provide health care in the community and covers all of Grand Forks County. So it's a really good way for us to communicate among providers about supplies and who's next and who needs vaccine. We can meet every other week to provide that information, and then we communicate with our partners in between meetings as well. We are able to reallocate our doses. North Dakota was really fortunate in that we set up a North Dakota Immunization Information System, or we refer to it as NDIIS, and all of our vaccine inventory is located there. So the State Health Department will always know who has vaccine on hand and who has administered it, and so they can additionally provide us information about where there may be supplies, not only within our counties but across the state. I would like to remind people too that there may be some inconsistencies that you will see across the state because we are such a rural state. This NDIIS serves us very well in that it gets vaccine to the very rural parts of our state and doesn't require that people travel too far, but it may result in some counties that might be a little bit ahead in the priority areas of other counties where vaccine doses may not be quite as plentiful. So we will definitely be communicating with all our partners across the state to ensure that consistency. And now what you're all waiting for is the vaccination prioritization. I've included a lot of links at the end of my presentation as well, where you can go and get more information. And as was mentioned, we are in Phase 1A and Tier 1A. There are several tiers within Phase 1A, and at the bottom of this slide, you can go to that link and you can get more information about what all of those tiers are. But currently, Grand Forks Public Health is working on Tier 1A within that Phase 1A, and those are healthcare workers and long-term care residents. And then there's a further definition there. First responders are included as part of healthcare workers. There's been a tremendous emphasis on vaccinating long-term care residents and staff because we've seen the greatest burden of COVID disease in that population. There are quite a few additional, well, there's five additional tiers within this particular phase, so I would encourage you to look at the links and to encourage the public who are watching this evening to check out the North Dakota Department of Health website for additional information. As vaccine becomes available to us, we will be calling up those additional groups that now become eligible for vaccine. We're working with all of our partners to ensure that they are doing similar processes too. And what was announced last week was North Dakota's Phase 1B, which includes older individuals, people with underlying health conditions that place them at risk for COVID disease, some additional congregate settings beyond long-term care, and then childcare workers, employees of preschools and kindergarten through 12th grade. And once again, there's more information on all of the groups that are included in Phase 1B. This is a very large group, so it may be some time before we get to this, and it's a little bit difficult to predict when we will because our vaccine comes in small allotments that we use up each week. And then lastly is Phase 1C, which includes essential workers and people of any age at increased risk for COVID-19. Once again, there's a link there for more information about the Phase 1C, essential workers. This is also another large group of individuals both across the state and Grand Forks County. So once again, it will be a staged approach through all of these phases until we get through them all and then to the general Some of the groups that I will mention that are in Phase 1C because you might be interested would be workers that are enabling access to human food, so those would be like grocery store clerks or people that work in the food industry, public safety positions that haven't been previously vaccinated, manufacturing related to the development of COVID vaccine, and then public transportation, persons of age 16 through 64, as I mentioned before, with one or more high-risk medical conditions, and then information technology. I wanted to mention a little bit more specific information about what we have done thus far at Grand Forks Public Health Department and the brands and doses of vaccines that have been allocated to our department. We are not one of the largest suppliers of vaccines typically, but we expect that we will be doing a great deal more vaccinating for COVID-19. And the two vaccines we've received thus far are the Pfizer BioNTech. This is given to persons 16 and older, and it requires the ultra-cold storage, but it can be refrigerated for five days. If small increments are shipped for this vaccine, it's reallocated through the state, which means as soon as it leaves the state warehouse, those five days of refrigeration starts. So it requires that it be administered very quickly once it's received. It's two doses, 21 days apart, and All True Health System did receive Pfizer vaccine early on, and so they are already starting on their second doses of their healthcare workers. Grand Forks Public Health Department will receive 200 doses of this vaccine for first responders and healthcare workers this week. And then Moderna is the other vaccine that's been approved by the FDA, and it arrives frozen, but it allows for a much longer refrigeration period. So you can keep it in the refrigerator longer, but we don't expect to need to do that because our goal is always to get the vaccines into the arms of individuals to protect them. This one is two doses, 28 days apart, and this one is for persons 18 years of age and older. That's not on the slide, but there is a differentiation here. There's different dosages, different storages and different age groups, so a lot for our vaccinators to remember. Grand Forks Public Health received 150 doses for healthcare workers and first responders, and we administered all of that as of last Wednesday, and expect to receive another 100 doses for healthcare workers. And that's just as of today. So you can see that there's quite a bit of information that's constantly changing. We have opportunities to access more vaccine if we need to, so it's a little bit difficult to predict, but we've been really pleased with the people that have responded thus far, and we've been able to use up every single dose that we've opened at our vaccination clinics. And then just some general guidance for COVID-19 vaccination. We are highly encouraging the public to accept vaccination when it's offered to you, whether it's because you're in a risk group or it's offered to your group as a healthcare worker, because we can't always guarantee that that dose you may have declined now will be available to you in the future. So we highly recommend taking the vaccine when it's offered. We're encouraging everyone to watch the media and communication channels from providers about vaccine availability, and I know that that's been happening in some very creative and robust ways internally with large organizations here in Grand Forks County, and I expect that we'll be able to provide some additional information about our vaccine availability in the near future. Mild side effects can occur, but that's just the body's immune response, and it's protecting you from the disease. I was able to get my vaccine because I've been able to work at the clinics and could be a vaccinator, and I got a little bit of a sore arm, but honestly, it was nothing worse than a tetanus shot or a flu shot. Extra precautions are taken at clinics to respond to the very rare reports of allergic reactions. So this is something that we don't always typically do, but will do at COVID vaccination clinics, is ask everyone to stay for 15 minutes. And then additional guidance is that the vaccine is highly effective at preventing disease and severe COVID-19 disease. You've probably heard about the 94% and 95% efficacy of the vaccine, which is true. That is a very high efficacy, especially as it is compared to other vaccines like flu, which has a much lower efficacy in any particular season. But once again, we vaccinate as many people as possible to get that herd immunity. However, more information is really needed to measure how well it prevents transmission of disease. So it will be recommended that we still wear masks, we still social distance, and observe all those other public health mitigation measures throughout the vaccination time period until herd immunity is achieved through vaccination. It's the safest way to achieve herd immunity. Without it, you can have a widespread disease and consequences overwhelming the health system. I've created a couple of pages of resources, which I highly recommend. One that I like in particular is the frequently asked questions on the North Dakota Department of Health website. Pretty much any question that has come into the Health Department is available on that document, and it's a really good plain language document that should answer any question that individuals have. They've also provided a lot of information to dispel rumors about the vaccine and its development. And then also, there is a place where you can look at how many doses have been administered in our state, and North Dakota's actually doing really well, and I think it's because we do have a good infrastructure and we communicate well among providers. However, I would caution people that it's only updated maybe once a week or maybe twice a week, and so it often lags. For example, if it's updated on a Tuesday and we have a clinic on a Wednesday, it might not be till the following week that all those doses are recorded, even though they're available in real time in the North Dakota Immunization Information System. And then, of course, as always, the Immunization Action Coalition and the CDC are really good places where providers and the public can go to get information on COVID vaccine. So while this is a high-level presentation, I would encourage people to look at all the resources that I've provided, and I would be happy to answer any questions that anybody has, and I believe that Haley is also available if there are other questions as well.
Thank you. Really appreciate that. Any questions for Ms. Swanson or Ms. Brun? Well, it looks like Haley's getting off easy tonight. Thank you. Thank you for all your guys' work and for your presentation tonight. Really appreciate it. I did notice today, the governor this afternoon moved the state from orange back to yellow, so the state's definitely heading in the right direction. We got to keep it going. I think the big takeaway is capacity bars and restaurants went from 50% up to 65. The mask mandate's going to stay in place, and it looks like events at the size of the Relf and the Alaris Center can go up to 5,000. Granted, they have a good safety plan and can do it safely, so there might be some excited football and hockey fans out there. So we'll see. But thank you for that. Any other questions or comments on COVID, or we'll move on? All right. Three, public hearings and Three, public hearings and second readings of ordinances.
3.1, public hearing and second reading of an ordinance relating to obstruction of sidewalks.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing for 3.1. Public comment, seeing none. Public hearing closed. We got motion for approval from Mr. Sandy, second from Mr. Kwame. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 3.1 carries. Four, action items. Administration would like to pull 4.2 and 4.3, and we've got, if anyone had any questions, we can certainly pull others. Ed's here for 4.4 through 4.6, or maybe Fred's here for 4.6, and Melanie's here for 4.7 and 4.8. Ken, did you want to pull 4.1?
Yeah, please, would you do that?
Did you want, anybody else want to pull anything, 4.4 through 4.8? He sounded like he'd gone through the cobbler pretty perfunctory, so we'll move on on those then on the consent agenda. Get a motion for 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, and 4.8?
Motion for approval.
Got a motion from Mr. Wygo. We have a second from Ms. Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those motions carry 4.1.
Grove Run ordinance modifications.
Mr. Veen?
Yeah, I had a couple of maybe questions on this. The first one was probably the one that I thought was most significant. As you may recall, I tried to make an amendment to that motion, and that was denied, saying that we could not amend an ordinance during the second reading prior to passage, and I'm not sure that's accurate. Could somebody respond to that?
I can, at a high level, and then let Mr. Gosstead. An amendment could have been made. It just would have had to not, in my opinion, not have passed that night because you have to give, you know, if you have a second reading and then you open public hearing and then you change it, you've got to give people a chance to come and talk about it. So I think it was my understanding that had we made the amendment, that would have had moved on, but the only way to have voted on that that night would have been as-is. Is that correct, Mr. Gosstead?
Yeah, and I can respond to this, and I'm looking at the statute. It's 401102, and I read it as an amendment after the first reading. You make the amendment, and it comes forward. Now, I went back and looked in anticipation of this, and actually, this thing was read three times. If you consider the committee, the whole, it was considered on 11/9, and then there was changes made as a result of that. It was then read for the first time, I think, again on November 16th, and further changes were made till it was finally approved on December 7th of 2020. So this was read, actually, if you consider the committee, the whole, being that it contains all the city council members except for the mayor. It was presented three times, and there were three edifications of this ordinance. So I read it in the ordinance or the statute in such fashion that, once we were at that December 7th meeting, it was presented as modified at that point.
Well, so what I wanted to do, and I think this is far-reaching for the city council in how we react to any, to an ordinance and ability to amend, and part of it is probably when I look back, I'm not aware that that stipulation has ever been used in the past. And so this was new for me, is all I could say, that this requirement took place. And also, as I looked at what was presented at the council meeting, it was explained that I could not make an amendment at that time. Not that it was going to, you know, be delayed a week, but I guess that's where my confusion is. This seems to be a fairly drastic change in city council's ability to react to a change in an ordinance that hadn't been there before, and I guess that really changes how we, as a council, are able to modify an ordinance as it goes through. Is that, am I accurate when I say that? That's just my interpretation.
And I'd have to look back at the video. I don't know if there was a motion already on the floor for that item before that amendment had been tried to make, but I don't know if it's a drastic change. It maybe just didn't come up in the past for you. Would Mr. Gosstead, I don't know.
And I don't recall the sequence or the meeting, the particular motions on the meeting. I just went back and looked at the council, the committee, the whole, and the council minutes, and if Councilmember Veen feels that he wants to, this ordinance is still subject to a motion to amend as he sees fit tonight, if he wants to present that motion, you can accomplish the same task.
Well, the question would be, then, you'll really have to start all over again with the first reading and a second reading to amend the ordinance, right?
Yeah, well, either way, if there was an amendment, I still under the, you know, impression that if you're going to amend something on the second reading, you should advance the public a week's chance to be able to get there to that public hearing. But in this case, at this point, yeah, you would need a first reading and a second reading, but I think council's certainly open to entertain an amendment at this time.
Yeah, you know, I'm not going to make an amendment at this time. I think the council has, from my perspective, made their wishes known that they do not want to have, they want to follow the recommendation of the vice president of the council being the chair, and so I'm not going to challenge that. I do think, though, and I still have a concern about the interpretation of being able to make an amendment at the second reading. I think in my eight years, we've done that many times, and I've never, that seems to be a new angle on this, and that is my largest concern. And I don't know if any other council members feel the same way. If not, then I'm just going to drop it, but that's my concern.
Mr. Sandy.
So, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Gosstead, thank you. Mr. Veen, I think that, looking back, and I went and watched the video, I think that we had, and I've subsequently had a discussion with the city attorney about this, I think we had a misunderstanding of people's interpretations of what was said, and I don't think the, whether, I can't remember exactly the words that the city attorney used. I don't think the city attorney was specifically, I don't think his intentions were to tell you that you can't make an amendment. I think his intentions were, you can't make an amendment and get final approval that evening. We certainly have every right to make an amendment after the first reading. It just has to go back another week for another reading if we do it prior to final approval. So I don't think there is a change going on. I think it's just the interpretation of what was said, your interpretation versus how I read it, how Mr. Gosstead meant it, I think were different. I hope that answers that. I don't think there's anyone saying you can't make an amendment after a first reading or prior to final. You certainly can. It just has to have another week for another public hearing.
Does that answer for you, Mr. Veen? At least in the time being, and maybe we can get some clarification during the week here from Mr. Gosstead.
I'd be more happy.
I'm not going to carry this on any further. I certainly then misinterpreted what was said because it was my intention to make the, at least to ask for amendment to the motion, and it is different when you're amending a motion versus a standalone motion. That's why I've decided not as a standalone motion to make a request at this time. So I think the issue is done and done. I'm not so sure, and I guess we think about that, how it should be carried forth, but that's all I wanted to make sure was addressed here in front of the full city council mayor.
Sounds good. Well, I appreciate that. Mr. Gosstead, do we need a motion to table this, or how do we end 4.1?
Well, it's under an action item. I didn't hear a motion.
So just move on.
Receive and file.
Okay, perfect. 4.2.
Building inspection director agreement for employment at will.
Mr. Phelan.
Mayor Bochensky, members of city council. As you recall, last October, thank you, city council, on the mayor's recommendation and administrations, we created the building inspection department. Associated with that, we also created a department head position and took that inspections department and separated from the engineering department. So in the meantime, what we have, we have moved forward with advertising for that particular position. We have moved ahead with interviews. We had a really good panel to review all the candidates that we did receive, and as part of a kind of the broader queue, just to give you an update, you know, we are planning to do some renovations on first floor and move planning, community development down to first floor. That's going to start this month, and hopefully by March, April, that will be completed, and that, those teams will move down to the first floor, and then we'll have a second floor that will be made up of engineering and inspections. They'll be separate and distinct, but obviously working together. So we really put a lot of effort into having, being business-friendly, and I think we're going to have more of a one-stop shop, more of an integrated team. And as we led to this, building inspections was a key component, part of working with planning, engineering, fire, public health, all the inspections-related things. So we're really proud that we're here tonight, that we do have a candidate in Mr. Brandon Baseflug, who did formerly work for the city of Grand Forks, and after he worked for the city of Grand Forks, went on to do some exciting and really terrific things, and is now back with us as part of this agreement. As we recall, this position is a contracted, benefited position, and so tonight, what we're asking for is, number one, to review the agreement and approve the agreement, and the agreement's in the name of Mr. Brandon Baseflug. So with that, I turn it over to mayors for any final words, and then I'd also like, before we take any Q and A, have Mr. Baseflug introduce himself to you as the city council and the community.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mr. Baseflug, I got a chance to meet him. I'm really excited. We got a chance to meet a majority of the inspections team here. Prior, he'd be starting on January 6th upon approval of this. I think he'll be able to help relieve some of that workload. I know they've been really busy in inspections, and I think that'll help to relieve some of that workload. It's going to take some time, but I look to a bright future there. So, Mr. Baseflug, please. Maybe you can help us in pronouncing your name correctly so we can remember that in the future.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, thanks for allowing me the privilege to stand in front of you tonight. I guess I'm humble and really excited about this opportunity. I'm looking forward to the challenges, or I guess I would relay them as more of an opportunity moving forward and looking forward to working with each and every one of you, as well as the developers, the contractors within the city of Grand Forks, as well as the department heads. Really excited for this opportunity and very thankful for it, so with that, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You said Baseflug.
Baseflug, all right.
Yep.
I was going to ask, so.
Appreciate it.
Any questions for Mr. Baseflug? Otherwise, with that, we'd be looking for a motion to approve or other comments. Motion to approve from President Sandy. Second from Ms. Mock. Any other?
Can I ask you regarding the motion, then? This is Weber.
Yep, the motion is to approve the agreement for employment at will, which should be in your.
Right, right. Just a comment. I don't recall approving hires at this level in the past. Is there a reason we're being, this is coming before council?
I think because this is a new department, and we'd gone through the process of having this be a contract employment. We felt that administration was best to bring this through council. I would say it's probably more of a rare occurrence, but because it's a new department, and we just want everyone to be transparent and give everyone the most information possible, so that's the main reason, I would say, unless you've got something to add, Mr. Phelan.
Yeah, I think to add on to what Mayor Bochensky said, generally, agreements, the city council approves anything over 50,000. This is obviously over 50,000. As years go by, the agreements get updated for whatever the current pay rates and that sort of thing. You won't see those as part of this, but as part of generally initial employment contracts, the city council has approved the initial agreements.
Does that work for you, Mr. Weber?
It does. I appreciate that response. At this level, it seems in the past, there has been a council rep on the hiring committees, but this is a unique situation, so any response there? This is being brought forward to us for approval, but there was no council member on the review committee.
This was so important, I sat on it myself, Mr. Weber.
Very good. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
Mayor, tenji.
Yeah, Mr. Veen.
One question, and you know, we've probably been at odds on civil service versus contract. The only big question I ask is, what's the difference on the termination process on this, for this contract position?
Do we have tangi there, or do you want to answer that?
I would say, Mayor Bochensky, I'll take first, and then after. I think it's very similar. The due cause provisions are similar to the existing contracts. The one thing that, I would say, the one substantial change you see in this agreement versus previous ones that have been approved is it has a six-week severance versus in previous agreements that we've gone through have been six months. So that's the most significant change in the agreement. But I would also make sure I captured, missed anything, Mr. Gosstead.
No, you've captured it, and you're not going through the civil service process with respect to a termination, that you'd follow the terms of the contract. And there is both a with cause, and we've delineated various six items that are with cause, and then without causes, general termination at will.
And Mr. Gosstead, that's the same as all the other contract employees, then?
I can't answer that every contract employee has the same terms. I think it is. I use the baseline agreement to draft the current agreement. There are some changes, as Mr. Phelan pointed out, with respect to the severance pay that exists, but I think for the most part, they're consistent with one another.
Anything else, Mr. Veen? Or any other?
No.
All right, thank you. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 4.2 carries. Congratulations, Mr. Baseflug. Welcome to the team. All right, 4.3.
Red River Biorefinery, and included are eight attachments.
Mr. Phelan.
Mayor Bochensky, members of city council, we are here again, and we did attach a lot of information later this afternoon, so we'll give you kind of an overview of where we're at today. As you recall, we are operating within a public health emergency declaration that in December, you move forward through March of 2021, so for the next three months. We were, as, the other thing you may not have recalled, but we were working under a emergency order with Red River Biorefinery that ended just before Christmas, and so you started that, we started that in October, and we went to near, in and around Christmas. So on the city of Grand Forks, we did receive word from Red River Biorefinery that they had some issues prior to Christmas regarding their startup, and it was really centered on receiving some, a load of bad biomass, and as we've discussed before, wastewater is a little bit different than water. When things go wrong in drinking water, you just, you put a lot of chemicals on it. With wastewater, it requires some biology, and when things don't go quite right, you just don't turn on a dime and fix the problem. So we were informed of an issue, and so we've worked over the holidays regarding how can we move forward as part of a potential furthering the emergency order. So what we have before you is the mayor, late this afternoon, also signed an emergency order that moved forward with, for the next 60 days, and the mayor has authority for 60 days under this public health declaration. This is very similar to what was approved in October, kind of a, I'll call it a 10-week period of time to get them, their wastewater system up and acclimated, and because they've had a failure in their pretreatment system, in a sense, they're not starting all the way over, but they're starting a lot all over. And so in front of you, the mayor has approved two months or 60 days, but they're going to need up to 10 weeks, and so we really are asking this evening for additional two weeks so that Red River Biorefinery can have that. I think the second thing that we wanted to do this evening is, certainly, we did want to bring something to you, you know, for the last two weeks, and want to have you guys approving this upfront, along with Mayor Bochensky. We've been, so we've been working, and I thank you to Melanie Parvey, Lisa Botan, and Todd Metelski from our water wastewater department that have been working, Sean Gaddy from E2S and his team, trying to figure out how can we do this one more time as we move forward, and Keshav Rappal, who's here this evening on behalf of Red River Biorefinery. He's the managing partner. He's here to speak for themselves, too. So really, this is an extension of the previous order that was approved. We need to start over for a large majority as we move forward. That's what we're asking for this week. over for a large majority as we move forward. That's what we're asking for this week. For you today, it is a 10-week startup period. The important part is that we need to look at what we have for capacity to our wastewater treatment plant. And so, previous at the JDA, we go, and I've said this before, we go through a lot of giving tax incentives to projects. And really, at the end of the day, for projects like this, the real value this community drives is our infrastructure, whether it's underground infrastructure or facilities, because without those, none of these tax incentives would matter. So, really, our facility has paid off in a lot of ways to keep this startup going, and I think we're on the third phase of trying to start up this plant. I did want to let you know that this is much different than when we had a startup last spring. And because of that start-up last spring, we did have a lot of odors that went, emanated through the city. That shouldn't happen, and this time, we're going to try to run all the flow through our wastewater treatment plant. Last spring, it was such a heavy load. This is like 20% of the strength that we had to take on last spring, just of, you know, proportionality. Because of that high strength last spring, we had to divert a large portion of that to the lagoons as part of the treatment process. And then, when, when spring came and summer, suddenly, we smelled the odor. So, I can't guarantee that that's not, there's not going to be some odors, but it, this is a substantially different moment in time than we had last spring, as we move forward. I think Mr. Repal is going to come up here, and they have made progress. So, again, they've made progress, and they're attached letter to the order states that they've made progress. So, really, the downfall has come with the wastewater pretreatment system. We did have several conversations about what happened, and so, we had some conversations about biomass quality. And within Mr. Repal's letter, there are some discussions about what they're, what they've learned this time around, and obviously, there's quality control, quality assurance that needs to happen. That's stating the obvious. The other thing that they have done, and they intend to do from January all the way through June, is to have a third-party consultant to provide them with some technical expertise onsite on an ongoing basis, and that's what we ask for as we move forward. They're going to put warm water into their pretreatment system, and that's to speed up the process of the biology, so that we don't have to wait, we can try to make it happen sooner rather than later. And there's been lots of lessons learned, I suspect. And I think the other part of this process, as we work through the next 10 weeks, is that we really need to work in a hand-in-glove kind of fashion, as best we can. We do want to do business development, and as part of business development, wastewater treatment plant is a pretty, as I stated, a really important business development asset that we have. On the other hand, we do have this regulatory responsibility. Industries like Red River Bio Refinery has an industrial pretreatment agreement with the city of Grand Forks, and they have that with Grand Forks, and we're audited by the North Dakota Department of Health and the Environmental Protection Agency. So, we're doing that on behalf of our state and federal partners. And so, we want to do the right things and do a really good job, both on business development and regulatory development. So, I think we've balanced those appropriately. We're trying to get this industry up and going, so that they can sell alcohol, whether it's in the form of ethanol, or whether it's in the form of hand sanitizer, and make lots of money, and grow and develop. And so, we're trying to balance those two things as we have moving forward. With that, I would ask for maybe Keshav to kind of give us a update on anything that I may have missed, and...
Mr. Phelan, briefly, did you, did that, did they work out a deal on wastewater with Simplot for three months? You might want to touch on that.
Yeah, that's very good. So, we should really be thankful to our other partner. The other major industrial pretreatment permit that we do have is with JR Simplot. And so, they had additional capacity that they weren't using as part of their pretreatment permit. And so, over this same three-month period of time, they've ceded some of their capacity, so that we can serve Red River Bio Refinery over the next, you know, 10 weeks, we'll say three months. So, thank you to Simplot. They're going to want to have that capacity back at some point, but right now, they don't need it, and so, they're going to cede that. The other thing that happened is, you recall, not only did we grant an order in October, you also did provide a compromise on some of the fees. And so, we did waive some of the penalty fees as part of that. And as part of this agreement, they need to pay to stay current over these three months with the current billings. We have also set up a payment plan. So, as recall, it was $600,000 plus that they owe the city in the industrial permit, industrial flow and strength fees. And so, we've set up a payment plan over next year, so that they'll keep paying that. They need to keep doing that. And then, as part of this startup, what we've said is that we're going to give them the capacity, but they got to pay whatever the current rates are in our code as we move forward, just as we would ask Simplot or anybody else who we allowed permit capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for the opportunity to talk about our project. As Todd mentioned, that we've been going through some ups and downs with our water treatment facility. As you can imagine, we've been here several times with a request here. We have had some success in some components of it, but our water treatment facility itself has some biomass that needs to be replaced. So, we've currently been working with the city water department on that, and we feel we have a solid plan for the next 10 weeks, primarily based on the lessons learned over the last almost year, really now, at this point, on getting our process commissioned. The biology itself, we've started, we've got about 66 to 70% of it that we're replacing, and we started the replacement process with trucks last week, just before New Year's. So, we've tried to accelerate that as much as possible, to try to meet and/or beat the 10-week schedule.
Thank you. And I think one of the important things to note, you know, for everybody, especially council, that the reason that an executive order was used is that this is stemming from issues of startup, based on delays in equipment arriving, and personnel, and expertise to be able to fire this up right in the first place. I think, I guess, give us your confirmation that that is accurate.
That is correct. One of the biggest challenges we've had is, our system has been designed from a European system. And so, with the travel ban that happened back in March of last year, we've lost that team, and we've continued without that knowledge onsite. We've done many of things, such as video chats, things of that sort, but it's just not the same as having the folks onsite. So, that's been our biggest challenge.
Alright, would you mind taking any questions if council has any?
Sure, yeah.
Any questions or comments?
Mayor.
Yep, Mr. Veen, please.
That's what I think is for Todd. Todd, I'm not sure everybody understands that the city of Grand Forks has regulatory authority in this. It isn't through the health department. Could you just maybe walk through what that authority the city actually has in this case?
Sure. Mayor Bocinski and Councilmember Veen. So, we run an industrial pretreatment program, and essentially, it's a EPA program that's delegated to the state of North Dakota, Department of Health, or now it's Environmental Quality. And that program is ceded to localities, like Grand Forks had to have the horsepower and the wherewithal to run that program. So, with industry, it's different than regular residential commercial. Portions of our, of our wastewater treatment plant is about high-strength wastewater, and that comes from heavy industry, and that would be, in our case, Simplot, Red River Bio Refinery. And there's other smaller users that have a low volume but a high strength. And so, we permit industries like Red River Bio Refinery to certain capacities in our plant, and based upon those permitted capacities, you know, we regulate them on a monthly basis. We do analysis and testing and all those kinds of things to make sure they're staying in line with, you know, BOD and TSS, which are solids, and how much oxygen is demanded to treat. So, and then, generally, once, once a year, we're reviewed by the Department of Health to make, make sure that we're meeting all the regulatory guidelines. So, that's what we do as a city of Grand Forks. It's been, it's delegated authority to the city of Grand Forks, and really, the intent of the EPA and the Department of Health is that our plant received low-interest funding through the state's revolving loan fund, which comes from the EPA. And they want to make sure that our municipal wastewater treatment plant is being protected, and is being run appropriately, and all those sorts of things. So, that's why we have this program. Lisa Buttonen does a great job. She's sitting back there, and she's the one who runs that program. She's the one who signs off on all these agreements. So, it comes with a high amount of authority, and it's a high amount of responsibility that we take day-to-day. And so, people like Lisa and Todd Metelski at the wastewater treatment, the reason why you don't have a lot of matters that come before you is they handle it at their level. And it's an awesome responsibility that the city of Grand Forks has, having these facilities.
So, Todd, if I could, I like what you just said. You know, we have this huge authority, but we also have that large responsibility, too. And everything we're doing is following within that jurisdiction that we have.
Mayor Bocinski and Councilmember Veen, I suspect we have been in, working in concert with the North Dakota Department of Health, and I would say their general response is, do what you think is best, okay? Try to work with the industry. And at some point, we probably are going to get reviewed, and we're going to have to have, we're going to have to have a good story. I think we do have a good story about what we tried to do during these moments of truth of this pandemic, trying to get this industry started up. We've done our very best, and at some point, we got to get the industry going. And the only way they can really get going is to use our wastewater treatment plant as we move forward. I would say, what lessons learned, you may ask, what's our lessons learned? Because we're working with other potential industries that are going to be value-added agriculture, that are going to need, you know, drinking water, wastewater, all these kinds of things. I think if we, if we were to go back in time, we did analysis with this Red River Bio Refinery, what kind of capacities they needed. We had memos going back and forth. Probably what we need next time, we come around this bend again, is we probably need more formal agreements, so that we can really work even more diligently, more formalized as we move forward. That's my lesson learned on this, because I think future projects that may come to Grand Forks are going to be even larger, and we're going to acquire more infrastructure investments. And it's going to be harder to turn on a dime. We've been able, thankfully, and I know, Mr. Sandy, you and I have talked, thankfully, we did have some capacity, that we could do some things. Thankfully, we did have a JR Simplot that was willing to say, hey, use some of our capacity meantime. If we didn't have any of those moves, to be frank, I'm not sure what we'd do at this point in time. So, that's why these are, these are big, big deals of what we, what we plan for, both on the water treatment and wastewater treatment side.
Mayor, one last comment, then. And I think you're absolutely right, 100%. We've got to figure out a way to get this industry up and operating. And I appreciate, Todd, you and the staff, and what you've been doing to try to make this happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Any other questions?
Quick question, sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Phelan, yes or no? Are we incurring any federal penalties related to the issues that have been going on with the extensions?
Mayor Bocinski, Dana, Mr. Council President Dana Sandy, no.
Thank you. Very good. I'll move approval, Mr. Mayor.
After that, do we have a second? So, is that Mr. Veen?
Yes.
A second from Mr. Veen. Any other comment or questions? Are hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 4.3 carries unanimously. Alright, moving on to five informational items. Looks like we have none. So, six citizen comments. If anybody here to speak tonight, you got your three minutes. Going once, twice, no citizen comments. Citizen comments are closed. Seven, approval of minutes and bills.
7.1 is the vendor list and engineer's estimate as presented.
A motion to approve. Motion for Mr. Sandy, second from Mr. Kwame. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
And 7.2 is the minutes from October 5th.
Anybody read the minutes to make sure? Thank you. Alright, Dana, Dana motions. Do we have a second? Ms. Mock, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 7.2 carries. Eight, city administrator comments. Mr. Phelan.
Mayor Bocinski, members of the city council, a few notes. We did receive $2.5 million of our Prairie Dog infrastructure funding, as you recall. We received that in December, just before Christmas. So, that was $2.5 million. We were anticipating, hopefully, that's only the first bucket that failed. And we were hoping the second one failed, that would give us a total of $12 million, but we did at least get the $2.5 million. We intend to bring that back to you as city council, to kind of let you know where we were recommending to move forward with that. Our recommendation is to put it all into transportation infrastructure or street projects for this point, but more to come early, early in January. We'll give you a heads up. The other thing is, we have those mixed-use developments that are going to come forward, hopefully for final review and approval at a public hearing on February 1st at the city council. We have scheduled some meetings tomorrow. The Park District is part of the city of Grand Forks, so whatever we provide, the state has said, basically, Park Districts are part of cities. But I am going to plan to go over there at 5:00, just to give them an overview of how the process works. Mr. Paul Messino said they have some new members, so it'd be good to just give them an overview to how these incentives work. So, I'm just going to go over there and give them an informational briefing, and maybe I'll get some feedback, and I can let anyone know here, what kind of what their thoughts are. So, that's, we're going to do that this week. Then, next week, Mayor and I spoke with Dr. Brenner, and we're going to plan to go to the school board meeting next week, Monday, January 11th, at 6:00. So, thank you to Mayor Bocinski for being willing to come with myself, and also Council President Sandy. So, we're going to plan to go over there and brief those. We were going to push it to the 25th, but we asked, we'd rather do it sooner rather than later. And then, finally, at county commission, we're going to be at the Tuesday, January 19th meeting, which is a Tuesday. And so, again, thank you to Mayor Bocinski and Council President Sandy for coming to me with that. And so, I think whatever we can do, we're going to try to inform them that, you know, generally, whatever we get out of these projects, we're going to be grateful to the community, and it's going to grow the community. And at the end of the day, we're going to, even year one, we're going to have more tax revenue coming into the city than we would have had without the project. So, we'll try to get that across. People are always skeptical, but when you talk about Red River Bio Refinery, we love greenfield projects, but they come with a lot of investment on the infrastructure side. So, we're going to try to get that across. And as some school board members have said, I know, I get that infill is easier for the city, but we don't know what you guys would do with infrastructure, and we may not even really care, but we care, and the community should care what we should do. And I think with, I really respect what Council President Sandy and Councilmember Kwame have done during this time, with helping them with some of the COVID funding, and I think that's really been appreciated. So, I think we've really done a great job. And Mayor Bocinski, I think we, I think if we can go over there and really discuss, they're trying to move forward with the school redevelopment project. Those are all infill development projects. If we can say, how can we partner with you, similar to what we do with private sector development, developers on infill development, and how can we work with you, whether it's planning and zoning, whether it's infrastructure development, or transportation-type services, let's work together. And I think if we don't work together, we're all going to struggle more. So, we're going to try to get that message, and whatever influence you may have, as we move forward, would be greatly appreciated, because we really would like to come back with thumbs up from both of those, from all three, to be in particular. And we can come back here on February 1st and have more of a layup, as opposed to a three-point shot with somebody in our face. So, with that, thank you, Mayor Bocinski, for all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Nine, mayor and council member comments. Mr. Weigle, any comments tonight?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Dockler. Not here. Mr. Weber.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Kwame?
No, thank you.
Mr. Veen? He said thank you. He's muted, but he said thank you.
I found it. No, thanks, thanks anyway.
Yep. Vice President Mock?
Mr. Phelan, have we ever calculated a rough estimate for what it does take for greenfield development, when you take into account all the infrastructure and roads? And maybe that's an open-ended question, but that might be something that if we haven't done, it would be a potential exercise to help with those conversations, or something we should consider for the next land use plan for decision-making.
Councilmember Mock, I have spoken with Mr. Brooks, and I know we're looking to move that forward here in January. I know there's conversations about planning and zoning. So, we need to do a better job at that. And maybe we should even give them a real-life example. I think like Discovery School, I'm going to say that, I don't know, it's probably a $15 million school. My guess is, if we added up all the transportation infrastructure that went into there, it's probably, I don't know, it's, we probably double that project. We don't do a really good job, and sometimes we slap ourselves on the back. But you just look at those kinds of things. We should do a better job. But now at least, we're working on some infill development thing, and trying to get across, how do we work together, so that we're really smart on the infrastructure, and so, they can put as much investment into the schools as possible. But we'll do that. Thank you.
Yep, Mr. Kwame.
To respond to Ms. Mock, I think that the governor's Main Street Initiative has some amazing data on infill development. It's really, really precise. So, I'll look for it. I have it in my email.
Yeah, and I think...
That might help that discussion.
Yeah, the greenfield is tough. There's a lot of different variables. How close to infrastructure? Do you have a pump house nearby? How much roads? I mean, there's a lot of different moving parts, but they're obviously tend to be more expensive on the city side, definitely. Do you have any other comments, Ms. Mock? Alright, Mr. Sandy?
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Happy New Year. Certainly, my sincere condolences to the LaFee family and their extended family. Also, I found out today that Mrs. Gail Clifford passed away last night. The previous, President Tom Clifford's wife passed. And so, I'm sure you would all agree, our condolences to their family and the extended UND family. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. I think that's a great place to leave it tonight, that we can all be thinking about that family and that hardship. Tough, tough to lose people. So, with that, move to 10, adjournment. You have a motion to adjourn?